Live now.
Okay, like to call the meeting to order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag of the United States of America. And to your Republic, which it stands. A nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so I wanted to thank everybody for joining for another special meeting of the school committee. I just have a couple of introductory remarks and then I'll hand it off. First, I wanted to welcome our new student representative Jake Nelson. Thank you Jake for joining us and we look forward very much to having you as an active participant in the committee. And I hope tonight will be a helpful context for all of us going forward. And then also I just wanted to confirm for everybody that school committee members have received new email addresses, school email addresses, and those will be published on the website soon. And we've also updated so that the school committee group email address goes to the five members. And once everybody has confirmed that they are able to access and use their school committee individual email addresses, we will remove their personal email addresses from the group email. So just wanted to confirm those logistics for books. And then one other item that Michelle, when we get to it, maybe we can kind of take this as how do we handle these types of things? We have, we've had a request from the Duxbury Interfaith Council to attend an event this weekend and also for remarks from the school committee. So I'd like to kind of fit that in for, I was gonna propose that maybe we, that I draft some remarks based on the town proclamation and then we approve them tomorrow night. But I think it's a good procedural question, Michelle, for how you would handle these things if we didn't have this type of meeting ready to go. Okay, so with that, I'd like to kick off the purpose of this, we set up a educational, is that what we decided to call it, educational workshop? Educational workshop for the school committee and for the broader community to focus on kind of the roles and responsibilities of the school committee to align across and with hopes that this will help us navigating our path forward, given our current circumstances. And I'd like to introduce Michelle McNulty, she's from Murphy, Lemery and Murphy. And she is legal counsel to the school committee and the district.
Thank you very much for having me and I hope that this evening I'm going to try to touch upon some key items that I have found of interest to many of my school committees. Especially whether they're new, whether they're veteran, it's always some refresher information. I could talk for hours, but nobody wants to listen to me talk for hours. So what I tried to do was really touch upon some, some key areas. I expect you may have some questions as we go along, I'll try to pause. I'm also gonna apologize upfront for my technical ineptitude, but we'll see how this goes. If I, if I flounder, I know that Dr. Antonucci will step in and help me with the technology. But I'm gonna focus on three main areas and this is a beginning. I do want to stress that you have resources available to you through the Mass Association of School Committees. I also know, and many of you may all, may know as well, that in the fall, pre-COVID, and I hope they will be getting back to it soon, MAS, which is the Mass Association of School Superintendents, and MASC, the Mass Association of School Committees, do a joint conference down in the Cape Hyannis. And it's a two or three day conference and it has some great workshops, learning opportunities, a whole wide breadth of information. And I strongly urge all my committees to partake in that because it's very, very worthwhile. And, and it's part of your continuing kind of education as the laws and the legal landscape for education continue to change. But moving into my presentation, let's see. So. Are you seeing the slide? No.
Not yet.
All right, let's try sharing the screen, right? That's what I have to do. How about now?
Yes.
Okay. If I look in the other direction, it's because I'm on two screens and I have not figured out how to get what I want in front of me. So I don't mean to be rude, but um, so just a little information on me. I am a shareholder with the firm of Murphy, Lemery and Murphy. As many of you know, we provide legal counsel to the Duxbury Public Schools. The school committee is our client. I have been working in the area of public sector education and collective bargaining law for approximately 33 years. That's how I turn it, okay. What I want to touch upon today is the role of the school committee, some conflict of interest issues, and also some school communication issues, because I, I find that these are the three areas that are of primary importance and come up over and over and over again. To start, I had to want to give you some scope of, of your role in relation to everything else. And I find, found a great couple of quotes from the, did I lose it? Or is the screen still showing? Oh, there we go. Okay, good. From the National School Board Association, and I do have the link there because this is language from their site. And I know you have the PowerPoint available to you and you can go back and look closer at what the NSBA has for resources. But these two quotes I thought resounded with me because it talks about sometimes the struggles that some school committee members have in recognizing or really placing themselves in their representative role. School board members are the unsung heroes in communities throughout the country. They establish the vision and goals for the public schools in their district, and they set the standards for the performance of schools and superintendents. The school board represents the community's voice in public education, providing citizen governance and knowledge of the community's resources and needs, and board members are the policymakers closest to the students. This is a national statement, trying to capture what school boards do across the nation. But what I find really interesting about that is it does mirror really how our statutes in Massachusetts view and authorize school committees. So you are an entity that is created by statute. All of the school committee's authority comes from the statute. So we always have to look back when we get the question of what can a school committee do? Or what is a school committee's role in a particular situation to the statute, the enabling legislation? And the main statute that governs all of education in Massachusetts is chapter 71. And you know, the various sections in there, but it's section 37 that talks about the school committee's authority. And in section 37, there are three main areas that are given to the school committee for governance. One is the selection of the superintendent and some other limited positions, which I'll get to. The approval of the budget, the spending, the fiscal watchdog component, and the establishment of educational goals and policies. As a school committee, you establish the policies your superintendent implements. And what I always like to talk about right here is the fact that the role of the school committee and the superintendent have changed over time. Prior to 1993, school committees really were the governing body for all aspects of the district. They hired and fired personnel, they granted back then what was called tenure. They dealt with student issues. And then in 1993, the Education Reform Act was accepted and it changed it to a site-based model. And so it then changed the school committee's really role to be these three areas. The selection of your, your chief operating officers, your approval of the money, and establishing the, the goals and the policies. I'd like to talk about educational goals and policies first, because that I think is one of the biggest areas that, that come to the school committee. And this is everything from adopting the district policies, you probably have a book that's yay big, that has everything in there from how you run your meetings, to how you deal with employee complaints, to policies required by law, such as harassment policies and bullying policies. You also adopt student handbooks. You are in charge of setting the policy for educational curriculum and the implementation of the statewide educational requirements, the graduation requirement. You have general charge and superintendence of the school buildings, determining the start and the end of the school day, setting the school calendar. You are the employer for purposes of collective bargaining. So it is the school committee that goes to the table with all of its unions. And also by statute and through collective bargaining, you establish, adopt and accept the teacher evaluation systems. Now, your superintendent implements that. And that's a great example of the adoption of the policy and the implementation, but you're involved in that, in, in establishing that and what those standards are. When it comes to personnel, there are some very discreet positions that the school committee still hires and fires. The main ones are your superintendent of schools, your business administrator. And you're also in charge of contracting with your special education administrator. Now, there are some committees who will have their superintendent assist with, with these other positions. But when it comes to the statute, you're the contracting authority. You also create and establish compensation for assistant superintendent. So even the fact of whether or not there will be the position of assistant superintendent, the school committee must create it and then establishes the compensation. For assistant superintendents, the school committee also appoints upon the recommendation of the superintendent. For principals, your superintendent contracts with principals, but you set the compensation parameters. And then when it comes to collective bargaining, you are the entity that negotiates and ratifies your collective bargaining agreements with all of your unions. Again, you may utilize a bargaining team and delegate to others, but ultimately you need to ratify those contracts. And you are also a level usually in the grievance process. So if there is a allegation of a violation of a collective bargaining agreement, it comes to you after the prior lower levels don't result in a resolution. The day-to-day operations though, remember I always said that site-based management that came about because of Ed reform? The day-to-day operations of the school district are vested with your superintendent, your principals, your special education administrator. That means that when it comes to other personnel, the hiring, the dismissals, the evaluation, that is vested in your superintendent and your principals. Your principal's actions have to be approved by your superintendent, but they are the ones who deal with any type of personnel action unless it's one of those positions that you appointed. Similarly, student issues, and I know from time to time, you may have members of the school community that come to you about student issues. Those are all under the umbrella and authority of your student services or your special education administrator or your principal if it's discipline. You know, again, back to that site-based management, that these administrators are the ones that are vested by law to deal with these issues. And it's the broader policy that you set that sets the standards for how they're going to deal with, with the issues of, of discipline. So what I was gonna do now, and I don't know through you, Madam Chair, whether you want me to keep going and take all questions at the end or wait till I get to a, a kind of a break between a couple of, of concepts. But I was going to touch upon some personnel matters because I think that it, it helps if you have an understanding, I have found with my committees that I've represented in the past, that sharing with them and understanding of some of the personnel rights that employees have kind of finishes out the picture here. But I didn't know if you had any questions or you wanted me to hold off on anything that I've done so far.
No, I mean, I think if people have questions, let's, let's encourage those.
So I'll keep, keep humming along then.
Yeah, okay, so does anybody have a question now on, on what we just went over? No, okay, okay.
So, so I, I don't, it's funny because the pieces that I'm gonna talk about now, I actually are, are part of a presentation that I usually give to school administrators. But I have found in my experience with my school committees, that they also appreciate understanding the inner workings on some of these personnel matters. So I'm gonna touch upon them at a high level, we could always dig in later. We can always supplement this workshop with another workshop. But I, I think it does help to, to know how it all interconnects. So as I, as I mentioned, the school committee's authority all comes from statute. The superintendent's authority comes from statute and the teachers' rights also are found in the statute. And our statutory system in Massachusetts sets up what's called professional teacher status. It used to be called tenure. And so for our licensed professional teachers with three consecutive years of service, they have just caused job protection. This means that they are entitled to due process, representation at investigatory meetings, written notice of any allegations or complaints against them, a pre-termination meeting, the right to appeal through an arbitration system that is overseen by the Commissioner of Education. And then along with that, if they are part of a union or their positions are covered by an employee organization, they may have other rights in their collective bargaining agreement that they can also take to arbitration. What this means is that in any disciplinary proceeding, whether it's a reprimand or a suspension or a termination, the employer, here the superintendent, has the obligation to not only provide the due process, but also prove the charges that are made against an employee. The burden is always with the employer. Teachers who have not been employed for those three years, they are subject to annual renewal. They, they are considered to be teachers without professional status. Once they've taught in a system for 90 calendar days, they do have the right within the year of their appointment for due process if there were ever to be any separation during the year of the appointment. That's written notice, a pre-termination meeting, but they have no statutory appeal rights. And this does not extend to renewal decisions. So for your first three years, a teacher is considered to be non-status and at-will as to the renewal decision. Teachers without professional teacher, depending upon teacher status depending upon the district and the collective bargaining agreement may have some rights of recourse there, but under the statute, they do not. In addition to teachers, your district employs other staff. And for every type of staff person, regardless of the position, we first have to consider whether there's a collective bargaining agreement that gives them job protection, due process and grievance and arbitration rights. Your administrators also have contracts, individual contracts. Principals by statute are entitled to contracts for anywhere from three to six years. When they are during the term of their contract, principals have good cause protection and the right to statutory arbitration. That again, does not extend to a renewal decision, but when they're under contract, if they've served more than three years, they have that job protection. And then you have some other employees within your district who may not be considered educational supervisors entitled to that statutory good cause protection and therefore do not have individual contracts and are simply year-to-year appointments or at-will employees. So it's not, it's like running any, any business, right? A school district, we are a public sector entity, but it's still a business. And like running any other business, we have to consider as we're dealing with personnel matters, what all the rights and obligations of all of the parties are. And my goal here was just to kind of outline for everybody what some of those considerations are. Now, you'll recall that when I spoke about some of the policy work that falls under the authority of the school committee, one of the things that I identified was evaluation. And in Massachusetts, also part of education reform and all the good work that has been, been done to improve and support our educators, the state adopted a comprehensive educator evaluation process. And it was very specific that it's the school committee that establishes the evaluation system. And it's the school committee that establishes the performance standards for the teachers, but it must comply with the principles of evaluation that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has set forth in regulations. Several years ago, we did comprehensive bargaining to put in this evaluation system. It's a, a good thing. Yeah, I, I, I've been doing this work for a long time and when the ed eval pieces came around, it, it took a lot of work, but it's a beautiful system. And building principals evaluate teachers. They're evaluated annually, some are on two-year plans, some are on one-year plans. Superintendent evaluates administrators. And all of this for your unionized staff is enforceable through their collective bargaining agreements. But we have an accountability system in place. And, and that's what really the, the point of my wanting to put these pieces into the presentation is again, you know, we know there's accountability, but I really wanted to focus on what it is because not everybody realizes the degree that the evaluation system is in place and how truly comprehensive it, it is. Educators and administrators, there are four standards that they're evaluated on. Again, I might be getting into the weeds, but I did want to have this here for your reference purposes. It looks at, you know, their curriculum, their planning, their teaching of all students, family and community engagement and professional culture. And there are rubrics that are established and provided to us by DESI that most systems have, have adopted, those model rubrics. And, and they allow the evaluator to basically look at the different levels of performance in all of the standards and indicators. There's self-assessment pieces, there's evidence collection, there's a formative assessment and there's a summative assessment. So, so it really is designed to assist educators in improving their professional practices.
Michelle, can I interrupt and just say, John, the, the DESI model rubrics, I, I remember having a conversation around this a few years ago. That's kind of been incorporated into our process, right? Yeah. Yeah, okay.
Ours is, if I can just add, ours are almost identical to the state rubrics, but there are some small tweaks that were made. So ours is Duxbury specific and I believe it's posted on the school website, but it looks exactly the same. We use the same format and form.
Okay, great, thank you.
So, so this piece, as I said, I wanted to talk about the, you know, really role that the superintendent has in staff, in the oversight of their professional practices and also to really let the school committee know that there are some extensive provisions put in place to really oversee personnel. Okay, so now I'm gonna kind of change my, got attacked a little bit to talk back again about the role of the school committee and the members. The school committee is a governmental body. And your authority comes acting as a body. Unlike a mayor, you're not an individual vested with power, you are a committee vested with power. And that means not any one member can bind the committee. There can be no action taken by the committee if it's not by vote and if it's not taken at a duly-held meeting. That's how you accomplish things. Individuals don't have any right or privilege greater than any other citizen or parent in the community standing on, on your own. So, so therefore, any member's ability to access information, to visit a school, to give directives to faculty and staff, it, it's, it's really non-existent. You have no greater authority than as a parent to say, I want to come into the school today. And you would have to follow those protocols. But what, what you can do is when you come together in the duly-held meeting, consistent with the open meeting laws, and you have matters come before you and you take votes on those matters and they pass by majority vote, that is how you accomplish them. So I'm gonna break it down a, a little bit. Let's talk about access to information because this comes to me a lot. I have school committee members and I'm not, and I mean in general, none, none of this is directed at Duxbury and what may or may not happen in Duxbury. It's just over my years, I've, I've had superintendents call me and say, oh, the, the school committee member wants X, Y and Z. So it's one thing when the school committee chair asks for information for a meeting. That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about when an individual school committee member says, I'd like to see in certain documents. So what's public? The employment contracts of staff are public documents. The superintendent's evaluation is a public document. But the evaluation of teachers at your high school are not public documents. There's an exception may because of the superintendent's position. Information about employees, individual employees and students, such as their disciplinary record, such as student records, the school committee does not have a right to that information. There are some limited need-to-know exceptions. For example, if we were in litigation over a student matter or an employee matter and there were facts that were relevant to that litigation and the school committee's decisions about how to proceed in that litigation. On a need-to-know basis, that information would be made available to the school committee. But then the executive session confidentiality rules apply. So, so it, it's really a fine line and it kind of goes along with the fact that policy sits in the wheelhouse of the school committee, but the day-to-day implementation of that policy and the running of the district and the dealing with employees and dealing with students, that's in the hands of, of other administrators. For members who want to visit schools, because this has come up in other places. So you know, I try to include in my presentation themes that I have had presented to me from other districts. If a school committee member wants to visit a school, they have the same rights of access and process as any other parent or private citizen. Now, I'm gonna say, this is pre-COVID. I know our world has been turned upside down. So, so my statements are, are in general what the world was prior to COVID. I believe many of these things have been revisited. But as a school committee member, you need to sign in, you need to have permission to visit. You have to make your appointments with the teachers and you don't have the right just to walk in and observe teachers or classes. And what I try to urge to my school committee members is that please be mindful that your presence will be noted and, and everybody knows the school committee member is here. And some teachers or some staff members may be intimidated by that. And so if you are in a school for, you know, a personal matter relative to your child, it's always nice to dispel the perception that you might be there on an official status and, and to identify yourself as being there as a parent, not in your official capacity of the school committee. The, the converse is superintendent may be doing a tour of the new building. If you're doing a new building, bringing in the school committee or it's some type of event that's going on, inviting the school committee members to attend and then you're there in your, your position as a school committee member. You just don't want to use your position or the appearance of your position in any way that may give to you some unwarranted privilege or right because that's gonna turn into a conflict of interest thing. So it's really a balancing act and, and I don't envy my school committee members when they have to deal with this.
Hey, Michelle.
Yes.
This is Matt. So just to clarify, earlier this year, John graciously invited us as school committee members to observe some of the goings-on because of COVID, you know, the hybrid learning and everything. And I know a couple of us took him up on that, that's okay.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Because absolutely, you came in, you were school committee members. It was known to the schools that school committee members are coming in today to see how we're running things. Absolutely, it's it's the issue of an individual school. it's the issue of an individual school committee member without coordination through the superintendent showing up at a building because they're having, you know, maybe some issues relative to their own student. And are they there in the role of the school committee? Are they there in the role of a parent? Are they seeking to get an advantage that another parent wouldn't have? And in that case, we say, it's in your best interest to follow all the rules that would apply as a parent. That's the distinction I'm trying to make. But the superintendent, absolutely, and superintendents do that across the state because you want to see what's going on in the schools. You just want to do it as part of a coordinated effort with your superintendent.
Right. Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. So, and I might be kind of going on a bit belaboring this, but, you know, also, the issue is directives to staff. It's remembering that the superintendent is the appointing authority, except for some limited positions. So therefore, the school committee member doesn't have the right to direct staff. It has to go through the superintendent. Even if it's one of the individuals that the school committee appoints, there should still be coordination through your superintendent, who is your chief operating officer. If you have an individual, if you have an issue with an individual employee or if one of the citizens in the town comes to you because they have an issue with an individual employee, it should be redirected to the superintendent because that's his role to deal with that issue and, and to work through the channels. And usually, it's even the chain of, of command or organizational structure is a better term to use for a school. And, you know, we bring the principal in to deal with things first, and then, you know, we work our way up. If you are seeking information from staff, again, as a parent, you have the right that parents have. But if it's in general to get information for your work on the school committee, your request should go through the superintendent so he can have that information brought from the appropriate entities and in a format that is for public consumption as opposed to individually going to a principal or going to a department head or, or that type of thing. So this segues us into the conflict of interest statute because, go ahead, yes.
Yeah. Back to one of your first slides in this previous section about authority comes from acting as a body and we can't, you know, as individuals represent the school committee. Could, could we take, if we have time, could we take a few minutes here? For example, for this request for somebody from the school committee to make remarks at a, an event and how we would, how we would navigate that? I mean, I think we can, if we have a meeting already set up, right? We can vote on it and agree as a committee that it's going to happen. But how else could you navigate that situation?
Okay, so, so first, if you, now I'm going to get a little bit into the open meeting law. And I try not to do too much of that because that's a whole presentation in and of itself, right?
Yeah.
So you know, if you have a quorum present that's acting on school committee business, you have to have it posted 48 hours in advance and hold it according to the open meeting law. Now, there are some exceptions. If you are attending an event, you don't necessarily have to post it. If you're conducting an onsite inspection, if you're attending a conference training program or event where there will be no deliberation, if you're attending a meeting of another public body, provided that you're only communicating by open participation and you're not deliberating, we don't have to post it. So if I, if I recall, this is not the school committee meeting with the Board of Selectmen because that would require both bodies to post. This is school committee being invited to a civic organization. And so therefore, you're not going to be deliberating. You, you wouldn't have to post it. All of, as many members could attend as they wanted to. And if they were asking for somebody from the school committee to make some remarks, typically, that would be the chair. And, and the chair could, you know, and I don't know what kind of remarks the group is looking for. If they just tried to share information to, to let the school committee know what their issues and concerns are. If they want to know what the school committee is going to be doing on a particular subject, the chair can speak to say, we have done X, Y, and Z, or we will be meeting to consider X, Y, and Z, that type of, of thing. The school committee as a whole could meet and act upon a public state, a statement that you wanted to issue, you could do that. Individual members could also speak as long as you're not deliberating. And again, if it's just to talk about what the school committee has done and what the school committee is, you know, anticipating, taking up at its next meeting. I'm not sure how much more, you know, ideas you have about what you want to talk about.
No, I think, I think that's very helpful because I think probably the focus would be on what we, what we anticipate we will be doing in the future, right?
Okay.
So if you can just make a factual statement and not any conclusions, then that would be appropriate.
You don't want to, and again, what you're doing is you are communicating by open participation, right? You're, you're not behind closed doors, you're not deliberating. So I, I think that is going to be fine. I don't see any issues with the open meeting law. I, I always say to folks, and I'm sure you have it, the Attorney General's Office has issued an open meeting law guide, which is a great resource. I know that you've probably all signed the certificate in the back, which you do, you know. I think it's once a year, but sometimes then you just forget that you, you have this. So it's a great resource. And as you probably saw at the beginning of the meeting, as soon as you said an open meeting law thing, I went into my drawer to grab it.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Okay, good. Okay, conflict of interest, which again is, you know, something you could talk about hours and hours on. But I wanted to pull up just a few things that I think are germane to think about when you're kind of faced with, with, with some questions or trying to decide how to act in a certain situation. Is chapter 268A. It prohibits all public officials, and you're a public official by virtue of being an elected official. Any public employee is considered a public official from using your position as a school committee member for personal gain or advantage. And the ethics laws are written in such a way that, you know, you really have to give some thought to them. They're not easy to interpret. The training that you have to do every two years as you sit on the module on the computer, you know, it takes a while, there's a lot involved. So, so it really causes you to pause. But personal gain or advantage means gain or advantage for an immediate family member as well as yourself, such as your spouse, sibling, parent, or child. So for, for example, you know, a using your position as school committee member or sending an email to a coach as a school committee member, complaining about a child, your child not being selected for a team, that could be problematic. It's one thing to do it from your personal email address as a parent, questioning why a decision was made. But take that same message and put it from your school committee email address and asking for an ex, you know, it, it changes the tone and tenor. And those are the things you want to be mindful for. You want to use your school committee address for school committee business. You want to use your personal email address for matters that relate to your child and, and your individual situation. You can't use your public resources for private gain. So if, if it's election time and you're doing up flyers, people even do flyers anymore, and going into the school offices to use their paper and photocopy machine, you can't do that. Similarly, you, you should be using, again, your private email address for private matters, your school district address for school matters. And, and not to use your position in a coercive nature and not to act on behalf of any immediate family member or anybody you're doing business with. Nepotism, you know, trying to get, you know, your, your spouse, your child, your relative, a position in the school system, or anything that gives anybody the thought that you're in a conflict situation. And these are pretty standard things, but I always like to touch upon them because it's, it's a good little reminder. The areas of risk that I see come up is when school committee members start acting outside the scope of their authority. So for example, if you're trying to gain access to documents or information or buildings that aren't available to the general public. If you want to know why a student was disciplined. If you're trying to find out, you know, I, I want to be in this particular building and use the gym, but the gym's not available to anybody else on the weekend. Those are the kind of issues that are going to get you kind of in a little hot water. Similarly, using confidential information that you've obtained by virtue of your position as a school committee member for non-school committee purposes. And, and this touches upon executive session. You're, you're going to have executive sessions from time to time. I know we try to limit them. We want to, the public has a right to know and that's where you want to do your business is an open session. But there are some, sometimes some exceptions that require us to go into executive session. And executive session matters remain executive session until the reason for the executive session has expired. And that means you don't talk about them outside of the executive session either. You don't share the information outside of the executive session because doing so not only violates your duties under the open meeting law, but it violates your duties under the conflict of interest statute. There are some examples, and I want to give credit to where credit is due. I, these are from an MASC document. Pressuring the superintendent or the principal to hire a particular employee, demanding that a teacher write a letter of recommendation for a constituent or providing special assistance to a student, advocating for student services for another parent's child, using school supplies for private purposes, or you're surfing the authority of a principal or a teacher. And, and again, these are sourced from MASC. You are required to engage in ethics training every two years. It's a state statute. And newly-elected officials must complete their training within 30 days of beginning their public service. And then every two years, and you have to file that certificate with the town clerk. And violations of the ethics law could result in fines, and there is criminal enforcement. So because of that, I always say, if you have any questions whatsoever about whether you have a conflict, stop and ask. And you can ask the state conflict of interest, the state ethics commission. They have an attorney of the day. The website will tell you when they're available. You can call. They will only talk to the public official. So even if we call to say, we have a question, they won't talk to us. They want to talk to the public official. And they will give you phone opinions or phone information. If you do have a conflict and you are required to refuse yourself, some folks don't always appreciate that refusal means you leave the room. So if you have to refuse yourself on a matter that's coming before the committee, you can't just not vote on it. You actually have to step away from the table and walk outside the room because your presence in the meeting room continues to have an influence on what's going on in the meeting.
For Michelle, I mean, I'll just go ahead and interject on, on the slide before with the examples. I think, you know, just as an individual, I think that the tricky, just tricky thing is in particular, you know, when another parent, you know, reaches out, right, about their individual situation. And I, I think that's just something for all of us to kind of talk through and everybody kinds of has to figure out their own way to navigate that. But I, what I've always tried to, you know, is, you know, you listen, or at least this is how I, I do it. And maybe I'm kind of seeking feedback. I listen and then I try to kind of revert to the organizational process and try to kind of, you know, give them advice on where to go back into the process of who they're talking to and what the next step is. And then from, as a school committee member, kind of filtering that information of, do we need to look at policies to address the situation versus the individual case? Does that sound like an appropriate way to think through this?
Absolutely, because, you know what? I know, and you know, you're elected, right? So the folks who elect you, they're going to come to you. And they're going to say, you're the school committee member, you have to do something about this. You know, I don't think the grading policy is correct. I don't think that, you know, this particular teacher is grading folks fairly, and you need to do something about that. And just as you said, the appropriate thing is to redirect the parent to the principal. You can let the superintendent know that a parent has come to you. And then, yes, it's the issue of policy. Do we have a grading policy? Can, you know, just so you know for your own, as a committee, your own edification. When it comes to policies, and kind of going back to that a little bit, and I know I said that you adopt and the superintendent implements, but you can ask for, and I know you have your superintendent and his administration give you reports on a variety of things throughout the year. Every school committee does. I know you have a policy subcommittee that probably looks at policy to see if it needs to be revised and updated, if the law has changed, you know, that, that kind of thing. That's an ongoing task that all committees do. But if you had concern about a particular policy, you could ask your superintendent, geez, could you just make a presentation to us about what is the policy? And then you would know what that is and how, you know, if there are any issues with it. But you talk about the policy, not the individual student or, or teacher or issue.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Communications. Communications is a hard thing, and it's gotten more and more challenging in the age we're living in and with social media, with the fact that it is a 24/7 with, it, it's not even getting inquiries and requests for things Monday through Friday, nine to five anymore. It's constant, and you're, you're being inundated, your administration is being inundated. The, the amount of time dealing with communications on every level is just unheard of in comparison to where we were, you know, 10 years ago or five years ago. But when you communicate as school committee members, if I go too far, hold on. When you can communicate as school committee members, you want to remember, you know, that you, and I did, I jumped a slide, sorry. I'm going to back up if you don't mind. All of your communications are public. Public records law says that any document sent from one public official to another or from any third party to and from a public official is a public document. It doesn't matter whether it's coming from your personal email address or your school committee email address, if it's about school committee business. Whether it's paper, whether it's digital, they're all public documents unless they fall into an exception. You need to have a system that's archived and searchable because we need to be able to respond to public records requests. So for that reason, I strongly urge that all school committee members use official email. And I know you switched over, and I applaud you on that. So at first, I wanted to kind of talk about the mechanics. Now I want to talk about your, the limitations on your communications. Again, perceptions. The chair has the authority to speak to the school committee by virtue of the office of chair. The other members are school committee members. And you can speak, again, as we just talked about, about what you've done, what you're going to do. Of course, you're going to voice your opinions, but what you can't do is say, the school committee believes X, Y, and Z. If the school committee hasn't, in a public meeting, voiced or taken an action to say, we believe in X, Y, and Z, or we're going to do X, Y, and Z. That's where, where the, the kind of fine line and the balancing trick comes into play. You also cannot disclose confidential information. We talked about that, it's a possible ethics violation. And you need to keep the subject matter of executive session confidential until the reason has expired. When you express an opinion in email or over social media, and it goes out to all of the school committee or a quorum of the school committee, you risk having a serial deliberation, which is in violation of the open meeting law. And school committees have found to be in violation of the open meeting law when one member sends an email voicing an opinion to another member who then takes it and passes it on to the third member, if it's a school committee of five. If a member sends an email to all members prior to a meeting saying, I'm not going to be there, but I want you to know how I feel about the matter that's on the agenda tomorrow night, that's a serial deliberation that could be in violation. could be in violation of the open meeting law. And, and so it's not just email anymore. If you have a Facebook page, a community forum, and more than a quorum of the school committee is going on the community forum and all voicing opinions on things and each one is reading outside of the meeting, there's a risk that that's a serial deliberation. And that's why it gets so messy right now. And, and the attorney general's office looks at this very strictly. And, and so I, I know it's a challenge for everybody because you're elected to do a job and part of that job is having an opinion. But the deliberation over actions needs to take place in the duly held meeting. And so when it comes to social media, absolutely, we, we have free speech rights in this country and it's something that, you know, we all hold very dear. But when you're speaking publicly, and if you're speaking with that perception that you're a member of the body, the governing body of the school committee, you have that open meeting law risk of doing deliberation outside of a duly held meeting. Additionally, you want to make sure that if you're using the district's network, you are bound by the district's use policies relative to social media posts and, and those kinds of things. So one word of advice that I give from time to time is that, you know, you, you might want to, if you are going to be posting something on social media, set it aside after you've written it and then read it again. You know, just to kind of give it a rest. I find that, that, that way, you know, it gives you the time to think that, okay, is this a deliberation? Is this going to violate the policies that we as a committee have adopted for our district relative to social media usage and courtesy and, and those types of, of things. And so in, in closing, look, and I did that in an hour, so now I can take lots of questions. In closing, I, I kind of wanted to circle back to, again, another entity that I think is very useful to school committees, which is MASC. And again, I have the link there for you. A school committee member in his or her relationship with the community should consider certain things. And there were some points that MASC has made in their code of conduct that I think are very, very useful. That your primary responsibility is to the children. That's why the school committee exists. And that the basic function is policymaking, not administrative. Your superintendent and his staff serve that role. That you're one of a team. You abide by and carry out the committee decisions once they are made. So if, you know, it's a three to two vote, it passes and then you're all bound by that three to two vote. You want to come to your meetings well informed and concerning your duties as a committee member at both the local and the state level. There's a lot of organizations that through MASC that, that does just great work. And you represent the entire community at all times. And lastly, the office of committee member is a means of unselfish service with no intent to play politics in any sense of the word or to benefit personally from committee activities. I think that just kind of sums it up. And I know that, that's why you probably all ran for office. And I know that you folks have had some challenging times in the past month or so. And I'm hoping that, you know, I, I know you're meeting with Glenn Kutter of MASC tomorrow and he'll provide a little more in-depth training, but I'm hoping that this starts a conversation and might help lay the foundation for, for some of, you know, your work. And I'm happy to now talk about anything else that, that I might be able to answer for you. So I can stop sharing? Or you want it? Yeah, okay. And now I can see you all again. Okay.
So does anybody have any questions?
Yeah. So I'm going to, back to, you were talking about policy monitoring and evaluation and how a school committee might do that. I noticed that looking at the MASC kind of model policies, they don't very often refer to a process for monitoring or evaluating how the policy actually gets implemented. So is that how, how does, does the school committee write that into their own policy? Or, or is that something that's kind of agreed?
So let's take an example. Part of your policies is to adopt handbooks, right? You, you adopt the, the handbook. And if you then wanted to know, okay, we adopt, the handbooks came to us, we adopted them, but then what happens? You could ask your superintendent to have the principal make a presentation in a school committee about, okay, the, the high school handbook as we, we last had it, what were the issues this year? Were there any issues with it? Are there any areas that maybe we need to reexamine or look at? The same can be said for your social media policy. That's another, probably a better example. So I don't have, have Danielle thinking that I, I want to reopen the high school handbooks. But your social media policy, you have one, you've adopted it. Well, has it been effective? Ha- has, have there been problems with compliance? Should we be looking to, is it too narrowly drafted? You can ask your superintendent who's in charge of implementing the policy and administering the policy to give you feedback on the policy. And, and the compliance with the policy. If you feel that policy has not been complied with, you know, that's a different story because then we get to who hasn't complied and what's the organizational structure for, for that. But does, does that help a bit? I mean, you could write a policy as to how we're going to review or audit the effectiveness of our policies. Absolutely.
Yeah, it's more rather than waiting until it comes to our attention that a policy might not be complied with. How do we as a manner of our, as a matter of kind of ongoing business, make sure that we're aware of how policies are enacted and how effective they are and whether there's a, a, a need to review and improve or, or, or what? That, it's more that kind of, so yes.
Okay. So a lot of the policies that you have, or not a lot, but a good, good many of them are required by, they're mandated, right? So we know that every year, and, and maybe this is just information that you don't have. So, so we know that there's a whole list, and I know Danielle can probably talk about it a little bit, of mandated required policies. And every year, we have systems who, they come through our office. I know the handbooks have to get reviewed every year. And I know that some of these other mandated policies we review and there's actually a whole checklist that employees have to every year check off that they have reviewed the policies. There's training on the mandated policies every year. And so I don't know if you know that. I know that these are systems that administration has put into place. And maybe that's the first step to have the superintendent and the assistant superintendent perhaps on one of the agendas coming up, just talk to you about, once a school committee has adopted policy, what happens to it next? Now, some of it as far as compliance, let's say they're conduct policies. Because you have a lot of policies that talk about conduct, whether it's con, usually conduct of staff or conduct of students. You're only going to know if those have been violated when when there's a problem. There's, there's no other way about it, right? That, that, you know, there's a problem, somebody, there's a misconduct situation. And as part of the misconduct, we find that they've also violated policy. And that, again, doesn't necessarily come to you because it's a misconduct situation superintendent or the principals deal with. I think you're talking about more of the policy that, that's, you know, again, social media or processes that have been put in place, are they being followed, those kinds of things?
Great. Thank you.
Welcome.
I think, does anybody else have a question?
I would just add, I don't have a question, but I, I think that it would be maybe helpful and you guys can decide if in September, you'd like me to do just a brief presentation about what mandated trainings we require of our staff and then what kinds of, how we lay out expectations for our behavior to new staff members and how we train our substitutes. And that's something that, like Michelle said, we do is just common practice. And Pat Dillon plays a big part in that too. But we can certainly present to you just briefly what that looks like, what trainings take place and how we, how we go about doing that. So I'd be glad to do that if that would be helpful on a yearly basis to just review that for the, not only for you, but for the entire community at a public meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So now I'll just throw my two cents in here. I, I see sometimes in some communities that there, i- it's not that these things aren't in place, but folks don't know they're in place. And so you have, and again, I'm not talking about Duxbury. I'm just talking about what I've seen in, in other communities that we, you have a well-oiled machine going forward on the administration end. But the, the governing body doesn't necessarily know that because they're not there every day seeing what's going on. You know, i- in the administration and implementation of all the policies and all, all the processes that have been put in place. And I think it helps if every now and then we take a step back and say, let's share how we're doing things. Because by sharing how we're doing things, it may put to rest some of the concerns that folks have that we don't have processes when we actually have some very good processes.
Right, right. I agree. Kind, kind of following up, I mean, we, it, you know, the schools, everybody globally this year has had a tough year, right? COVID has just turned our worlds upside down. And I think as a school committee, you know, we've been really navigating in the school administration more so, but really navigating, you know, quite a bit of comments and feedbacks, feedback. And I'm just wondering, you know, obviously we have open, you know, public comment at meetings. And we have folks reaching out to us as individuals and, you know, reaching out to the school. What, what do you see or what do you recommend? Like what are other communities, school districts doing or, or their recommended best practices in terms of, you know, appropriate ways to, to seek input from parents, but also the broader community? I mean, I think we, we had a, you know, Matt brought up the idea of a parent forum. But I was just wondering if, if there are other things that you recommend or that you see other communities doing?
So, um, I have seen the forums on the special interests and, and topics that come up. Whether you start them off as information sys, information sessions so that the administration by reporting to the school committee, right? Usually that's, let's say that there's been a study on the change in school start time. It's a big issue, right? Big issue. And, and usually, yes, you, you, you want the community to be engaged. And, and it starts off with study committees. And then it starts off with those reports being shared to the, with the school committee. And by sharing with the school committee, it's disseminated to the public. That, that's how it, it gets out. But through the study committees or through holding a public forum, you can get feedback surveys. A lot this year has, have utilized, and I'm sure you folks have utilized surveys galore in looking at what parents are comfortable with. As you transition through the various learning models, that's another mechanism you can get to, to have feedback. The difficulties is, yes, you have public comments. And I know we're, we're looking at that and, and maybe what public comment is. I don't know if public comment gives you the mechanism that you're looking for to get the type of feedback that you were just talking about. I, I think more you, you might want to, you know, break it down to what the issue is. Getting the information from your administrators who are your experts on it. And then, you know, feedback through either surveys or forums or, or those kinds of things. And, and that's just, you know, my, my, you know, two cents. I, I'm sure John and Danielle have ideas about how to more engage or better engage the public if that's what the concern is.
Yeah, yeah. And I think it's, it's tricky, right? Because you want to make sure that you're getting the broad, broad feedback. And I think sometimes some of these methods, you're, you're getting special interests versus the broad community feedback. And that's, I just want to make sure that we keep that in mind and that we try to navigate that and be creative in, in how we manage that, but. Okay.
And there's never, there never seems to be agreement about much. So it's always a spectrum, a spectrum of opinion around whatever the issue is. So, and that, that's useful to know what the spectrum is. And, and how it, how it's distributed, how, how opinion is distributed across it. Cause it's rarely kind of either or situation.
Not, not these days.
For policy review, Michelle, we're, you know, I think we've had a lot of conversation in our last, definitely in our last meeting about undergoing some type of kind of a deep dive on policies. And I was wondering, I know, you know, the MASC has their model policies and they kind of do an update, I think on an annual basis. And then there's some required ones. But do you see, like, I was thinking, you know, Danielle and John, that you guys have like a curriculum, like a rotating curriculum review, right? I was wondering if you've ever seen a, a school committee kind of having like a rotating policy review, right? So we make sure that, because you can't probably get through all of them on an annual basis. That's, that's a heavy lift. But, you know, if you kind of rotate them like 20 each year or something like that. Have you had any best practices on, on how to to do that?
I don't know what John and Danielle are, you know, have in place right now. I, I do know that I have committees who have policy subcommittees and, and they do that. They take it up in, in chunks, if you will.
Yeah.
You know, sometimes it's driven by changes in the law. And, and again, I am a big fan of MASC when it comes to policy. I, I think they, they do a good job. You know, we review policy all the time. We have our own ideas about policy. I, I'll tell you that I, I always start with what does MASC have out there? You know, there are some like bullying policies, you know, there, there's some very specifics from the statutes that have to be in there. You know, there is now the Title IX stuff. All had to be changed when the regulations came down. And now we're waiting to see if with the new administration in Washington, if there's going to be further changes. Those things happen because they're driven by the legis, the respective legislative bodies, right? But even I have a committee right now that is looking at their governance policies because their region and their regional agreement changed. And they don't know if their governance policies are now consistent with their regional agreement. But for a standalone, a town committee, a town, school district, you know, from time to time, when was the last time that you looked at the provisions of your policies that governed how your meetings are run? You know, or what your agenda looks like? Or does it even deal with the changes in technology? Not, not the zooming thing, which we don't know whether that will stay or not, but just even some of the changes in technology? Or are they written clearly that reading it now versus when it was written 10 years ago, it makes sense? So, so yeah, you, you can absolutely come up with a system and have your policy subcommittee start tackling that in, in chunks, right? Because it's overwhelming. And some committees, you know, to change policy, it has to have more than one reading. It has to go to subcommittee first. I, I, I'm not familiar with, with what all your requirements are. I do know you're working with somebody else in my office who's kind of taking a look at a little bit of that.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, just one, one follow-up. Subcommittees
Yes.
Also follow open meeting law.
Absolutely, 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 absolutely. And that means not only that your subcommittee, even if it's a subcommittee of two, right? Your, your subcommittee has been appointed by a committee that's governed by the open meeting law, then the open meeting law applies to you, which means it has to be posted. You have to follow all the rules and you have to have minutes and you have to review the minutes, just the same way you have to review the minutes and release the minutes of a full, committee meeting.
Yeah. So I think that's what, something we have to kind of keep in mind as we go forward. Sorry, Dr. Enchanted, I think.
Oh, no, not at all. It's a good question. I just want to go back to policies for a moment. I think that the district, working with MASC, did a, a wholesale review. I believe in 2014, maybe 2016. I believe in 2014, maybe 2016, I'm, I'm forgetting now as I think about it. So, so that's a good thing, right? And, and I agree with Michelle. MASC, there's a reason why they're the gold standard, right? Because they have, they know best practices, they know the laws, you know, and they kind of see the broad picture in the Commonwealth. Um, so anyway, I think that's a good thing that Duxbury has gone through that exercise. So I, I think your, your idea i- is good, right? Some, some kind of rotation or maybe even to start some kind of specific interest, right? If you have an interest about meetings or interest about what harassment, which we just did the harassment policy, let's tackle it that way. But I don't think right now we need a wholesale, um, review. So we're, we're open to anything. Um, but we're actually in pretty good shape. Most of the policies don't really need to change. A lot of them have been there. Michelle, I don't know if you agree, but a lot of those policies in our manual, you know, they've probably been pretty stable and consistent for, you know, I don't know, a couple of decades. Um, certainly there are some things that we need to tackle on, you know, I, annual or every few years. So yeah, we can talk about that. We're open to anything. And MASC actually is really good to work with. I have a pretty good relationship with them. They do good work.
I, I will say that when, uh, folks come to me to say they want to rewrite their policies, I actually say to them, go talk to MASC. Yeah, I, I mean, you know, it, it's a, it's a, it's a large undertaking. And, you know, that's why you're a member there.
Yeah, I, um, I, well, I saw I was been looking around at a few other, um, school committee websites. And I noticed that some of them, um, when you go to their policy site, it just, it's just a link to MASC policies, right? Like, they just wholesale adopt them. Um, which I mean, I think, I think, John, I think they, I think 2014 sounds right. So I think that happened before I came on. Um, so.
The one thing I would like to do though, um, double check that, because I don't know, sometimes they're whole, they're, they're, they're just a link to the site, but they also have like the same look. So we can purchase, um, a service from MASC that will, um, uh, digitize our policies. And I talked to them about, I talked to them right before COVID, uh, about doing that. And I, I think that's something we should consider because it's, they, they, it's searchable, right? So you would, they all look the same. So like Duxbury's would look like, Quincy's would look like, Brantree's or whatever, but they're actually our policies, but they'd be searchable. They'd be a little more accessible to the community. So not that we need to make a decision tonight, but I think that's something we should consider because it's, it's kind of hard to navigate PDFs and, um, anything that's not searchable. But anyway, just an aside, you know.
Okay, it's good to know.
I think this, I don't know, my sentiment is not that we want to embark on a wholesale rewriting of policies, but to have a, um, have a pattern of practice in place where school committee members are kind of, they have their memories jogged about what our policies are. Because I mean, we're, we're in charge of policy as a committee. And yet, when, as you were saying, you know, if you have a, a smoothly running administration, things just kind of happen. And you only, um, as a school committee, you only kind of consider or, or things aren't brought to your attention unless something negative happens. And, and that's, that puts you in a position of reacting rather than kind of having a sustained process in which you're kind of making sure that you're up to date and attentive to what kind of guidance is needed in these documents, that they're up to date and all that kind of thing.
We can build an annual test for you guys, Julia.
Who can find policy AB? The fastest.
Honestly, you feel like you need it. Policy ABF slash R.
And I mean, Michelle, while we have you, we're, the meeting tomorrow with Glenn is going to build on this and kind of work on, um, kind of operating protocols for the school committee is, is kind of the, hopefully the, the plan, but also we're flexible so we can address whatever we need to address in the meeting. But, um, so I, I was just wondering, when, when I say the word operating protocols, I mean, the ones that I've seen are very, you know, general and a lot of them look the same. Um, I don't know if you have any things that kind of, when you hear that word for a school committee, what jumps to your front of your mind or?
Um, wha- what jumps to the front of my mind when you talk about operating protocols? And, and maybe he has something else in, in mind is just, um, you know, uh, creating, creating of the agenda, um, the order of the agenda, process, protocols for the running of the meeting, um, running of the subcommittees, you know, a bunch of pro, those kinds of, of, of things, yeah.
Yeah, and I think one thing that, you know, as new chair, I think we have a lot of historical practices around that. But I think it would be helpful to also document the role of the chair a bit so that that's, you know, really visible. Um, because, you know, learning as I go, right? The idea, you know, I'm just here to serve the committee, right? And run efficient meetings essentially, and also serve as a, um, conduit for the superintendent, right? So things like that. But I think that's another piece of it that I'd like to kind of see fleshed out a bit. Um, because I don't think we have that documented anywhere. It's always just been how it's done.
Does that mean, yeah, it does make sense. And I have seen, I, 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 I believe that I have seen some, um, policies that talk about the different officers in the committee nomination, that process, as well as what their role and responsibilities are.
Yeah, and we do have some of it in the policy itself, actually. We do have a policy that addresses it. But I think it's kind of like that next level of like, how does it play out operationally? Okay.
So I hope I didn't bore you too much.
No, I thought it was.
Not at all.
Not fishing. I just am hoping that I gave you the type of information you were looking for. That, that's probably how I should put it.
I thought it was fantastic, personally. It's Kristen. I'm here.
I was not fishing. I, I just tried to be responsive to the need. And that was the whole thing. When I put this together, I, I was trying to put something that, uh, again, wouldn't take up your whole evening, but would be responsive to what I believe the need was that was, was expressed. Uh, happy to, to do it, do something else again down the road if, if you like. Um, and, you know, even if there are specific issues, you want to kind of do some brainstorming. You know, that, that's fine too.
Thank you. And I think it was really helpful to kind of, some of these things we've talked about in the past and some we haven't. So I think it was very, very helpful.
Good.
So, okay. So I guess if there's no other questions or comments, then I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
I move that we thank Michelle and adjourn.
Well, you're very welcome. It was my pleasure.
Second. So now I have to do roll call. Julia.
I.
Matt.
I.
Kristen.
I.
Shannon.
I.
Okay, thank you, Michelle.
Have a great evening, everybody.
You have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
Good night, everyone.
Hi.